I'll call this meeting to order. This is Town of Alpine Town Council Meeting 701. Business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Assistant Clerk, can you take roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Castillo here. Councilman Scafiati.
Present.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilman Burchard.
Here.
Councilman Larson.
Here.
Mayor Green, you have a quorum of the council.
Thank you. I'm just going to tell everyone right now, I'm sick with bronchitis, so I'm going to try to slog through. I'm going to be coughing on these two a lot, I'm sure, but.
Just our direction.
Yeah, try not to. We don't have a very long agenda, but we'll try to work through it as fast as we can. Did everyone have a chance to read the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
How about make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Let's do that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Any questions on that?
We'll put it on the table.
Yep.
Motion for approval of consent agenda?
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
For Alpine Winter Jubilee 2-1-2025. That's passed. Still, we're doing a catering permit.
We already offered it to them.
We already did it, yeah. So amend the consent agenda to take off Alpine Jubilee 2-1-2025, seeking to ratify permit.
It says permit was already issued, seeking a motion to ratify.
Well, I think we just need approval through Town Council to distribute it. I think it was an oversight. Yeah.
Do just do a motion to ratify the permit that was issued for the Alpine Jubilee.
Make a motion to ratify the catering permit for Alpine Jubilee on 2-1-2025.
Second.
Permit was already issued.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Basically, this already happened. It was kind of like an oversight, I think. But, so at this point, we're just.
Just saying it was okay.
Okay. All those in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So back to the consent agenda. Any other changes? All those in favor of approval of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to reports. I don't have much to report, seeing as I can't really talk all that well. So I will yield my time to Dan Scow with Planning and Zoning.
Go home. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. We had a really good meeting. We approved two other homes that had been tabled. They came back with all the documentation that they needed and we moved them right along. We did receive a letter for the piece of property across the street from Lower Valley, which led to some confusion because Lower Valley wants to be the originator of the permit for that piece of property. So.
Is that burying the power lines regarding?
Yeah, well, it's, they don't, I believe, it's not known yet, I believe they don't want anything happening until that power line gets buried. So they want to see the plans. They want to approve before anything happens. What the letter stated is that they would approve a grading plan. Well, we don't do that. We don't, so Christine is going to have some more discussion and email with Joyce Ross, who is the queen now. When she jumps, when she tells me to jump, I jump. So we're just going to follow up with some more information from her and then we can report back to you guys.
And can you clarify what project this is?
That would be the Lake View.
Oh, okay.
Right over here.
That's the.
The apartments.
Apartments directly behind the car wash.
Okay.
And, you know, we just left it. We just need further information from Lower Valley to understand exactly what they're saying. Planning the development, we had two, 160 over here and the Dead Horse property. And we had really good discussion with them. They wanted to bring the PUD for 160. However, through the discussion with Brett, it was better for them to start the construction, bring the plans, get approval, and then follow with the PUD later. They have three different options. Do the PUD, get a building permit, and start building. The PUD is never a defined thing. It could happen and it cannot happen. So if we wait for the PUD, they're not going to build this branch. So I said, you should really go to building, worry about the PUD later as you develop the rest of the property.
Is it required by the Town of Alpine for a plan unit development?
Correct. So in the Land Use Development Code, when you have multiple buildings, you can go to a plan unit development. That one building that we're talking about now that they want to start, they want to subdivide, they want to make that a little subdivision. So they got some, they got some things that they've got to hurdle through and they may or may not happen because it's a vote.
Yeah. They want to start that building on the backside that's adjacent to the.
They want to start that now.
Right.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to.
Yeah, hold it up for them.
You know. Other discussion was the Dead Horse piece. There's a commercial property that's going to be Alcorn Estates. Great piece of property. They're gone. They submitted the plans. I think they paid their permit. We're waiting for some structural drawings. And then through the discussion, we started talking about the setback, especially for commercial use, and parking, grading with a curb and gutter. And so what we want to do is we're going to add a little line in the next reading for your Land Use Development Code that defines that the edge of the curb is the five foot, that the curb moves into your.
Not into the five-foot setback, yeah.
Needs to be defined. Other than that, it was a quick, easy meeting. Any questions for me?
Guess not. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Do we have Kevin on the line? Okay. So Kevin has, he's out of town right now, but he has called in and he's willing to give us the report online. Are you there, Kevin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you. Thank you. Do you mind giving us the engineering report?
Sure. All right, I've got it here. So the AM radio RE project, we're still working on that. They're trying to get all the pieces, parts ready to go, and then they're going to start having a pre-con meeting so they can get everything set up as far as with the customers, so they can get that moving. That project is scheduled to be completed by the first of August. Development reviews, Dan just talked a little bit about the Dead Horse project. They've been working with us as far as harmony design, has been asking about some pressures in the lift station and some of those things that are over there and how they need to tap onto the lines themselves. So we've been getting them that information. I believe Craig went out there and worked it with them a little bit as far as where things are and kind of showed them some things so they could verify it. Since we're not verifying that, the pressures and the elevations for them, that's something they have to do for their process. The water permitting part of it, we've talked to the state engineers. We're trying to pull all the documentation together that they want to look at, and then we're going to have like a preliminary submittal, and then we'll go through that with them. And then once we have that and we show them everything we've got, we'll pull together the whole thing and then start pushing that forward towards the state. So we'll have the water permit from north of the bridge. So we'll have to take care of all that. Looking at trying to make sure we've got the fine saddle all ready to be tied in as well, since Craig wants to go ahead and start fix that leak and get that running for the summer.
You mean the well that's next?
Yeah, there's two wells over there, that's fine saddle. Yeah. So he'd like to get that going. It's only about 175 gallons a minute over there, but that's still a little bit more that we could use for the summer when we're kind of pushed a little bit. So we just have to make sure it's still up to DEQ standards and everything's ready to go. So a little bit of work on that.
Okay.
Jumping into the sewer fund, the wastewater treatment plant, the backup operators were helping with the systems. Dustin came back, so that is awesome. So we won't use the backup operators as much or at all once Dustin kind of gets back up to speed, which shouldn't take but a day or two, I would say. Thank you. So, yeah. Craig said he went through, there's some missing discharge monitoring reports. He went through that a couple weeks ago and a week ago, and he said he got that all taken care of with the state. So everything is up to date at this point. The pretreatment plant by the roof hatch where the membranes will be lifted in, lifted out, we noticed a little drip up there coming off of it. There's probably a little flashing or something. So I noted, notified Robert Shockey on that, so he can get up there and we can get that fixed. I don't know if he's got up there yet or not, but it was not leaking last week. So I'm hoping he got up there and found something that was, you know, a little piece here that needed to be fixed. If not, we can flood it this summer and find it.
Kevin, did he respond to your request? Have you gotten any?
I sent him an email with a picture of it and then I called him, and that's all I've gotten from him at this point.
Okay. We can easily request an update.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, because we definitely want to make sure it's good. With it coming through the roof like that with the insulation, we'll request that he can get up there and open it up a little bit and make sure we don't have any damp insulation or damp wood that might get molded in the future. So we'll want that cut out and looked at, kind of dried out if it needs to be dried out and then patched back.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
And would that be warranted then?
Yes. It hasn't even been finished yet, so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, his part was finished in July, I believe we accepted it. So he's still got six months of warranty left to go.
Okay.
On the process piping side, on the construction side, substantial completion date, we've kind of pushed that out because we found out there were some parts that were supposed to be provided by others. So Cambrian sent us, sent it to Radinou Engineering on, I think it was April 17th, I believe, of '23, so end of April of '23. In the middle of May, the town stopped using Radinou Engineering for their design of it, and then we moved to Cambrian to do that design. And in that process, I don't think it ever got pushed to anybody else. So at that point, it got lost. So one of the change orders that's coming through is actually, it's on your desk to look at tonight, is of those miscellaneous pieces and parts. There's a few items in there that are four weeks out. So it's, we're going to have at least four weeks to get that. There is one item on Precision's change order that is six to eight weeks out. So I noticed by that is eight weeks out to get it and a couple weeks to get it installed. So once, if y'all look at it and if y'all approve that change order, we are probably two and a half months from today that we'll be looking at starting that plant. So we are still doing weekly construction meetings. We've got Cambrian online, we've got Precision online, and Mountain West Mechanical as needed, and Control Engineers for the SCAD controls. The change orders that you have to review are $86,000 for Precision and $55,000 for Cambrian. It's a little bit quirky on Precision's part because Precision is actually putting a change order into the town of $27,315. That cost is actually going to be deducted from Cambrian's cost on theirs because their MBR equipment container was not completed. So basically, we're basically charging, doing a change order of Precision to the town, and then we're going to deduct it from Cambrian's for that $27,000. There's a little bit of electrical wiring inside the panel that was not done correctly coming from the plant as well. So we'll see another one of these coming from Precision of X amount of dollars that we will backcharge Cambrian innovation, that same amount, so.
Sounds good.
Let's see. We had a meeting, Gene came up. We had a meeting, Gene came up from Pinedale and.
Monica, Craig and.
Melody and I, we all sat together and went through the Midwest Assistance Programs, rates for the sewer and the water, and touched bases on the ways that we could make that more uniform and a better way to work through it. Possibly instead of doing an ERU, maybe go to fixture units. Fixer units are based on a plumbing code. So it's really easy for us to work through. And everybody would understand it a lot easier than, you know, what is an ERU? It would be all the fixtures that they've got. And then also, we want to make sure the sewer rates follow what the water meter flows. Right now, I believe it's just a base cost for sewer. At this rate, we would be looking at a base cost plus something that's going to show how much the flow rate is. So if you use more water in the water meter, that means you're going to have more sewer flowing out. And that's how you would be charged as well. We're looking at a water line repair and replacement projects on Nelson Lane and Sunset Drive and Overlook Circle. We have to go through the DEQ for the design on that. So we want to put in a couple of different places together since the design and the work with the DEQ is all the same. That's number two on that. And then we helped Craig a little bit with the Public Works Employee Flow Charge and responsibilities from what we've seen at other, Pinedale, Kimber, Town of Alpine's part, what you've got now, also up in the Aspens and then out at Teton Village, just for ways to look at how you might be able to set that up for that in the future. And then we are trying to get all the capital improvements and the general fund list for the FY twenty-six budget put together.
Perfect.
That's great. You're going to stick around a few minutes to.
Yes, sir.
When we talk about the changers? Okay. Any questions for Kevin while we've got him? Thanks for that update, Kevin. So Andrea, do you have an update on the successful Jubilee?
It was very successful. Friday night, we had not as many entries in the grade as we would have liked, but the Fire Dancers were a huge hit. And I believe we were going to submit another grant to travel and tourism for them to come back next year. And then Saturday, I think the children's events were well attended. And we had, oh, the snow sculptures, that turned out really, really well. I think we'll try to expand that next year. And at Casino Night, attendance was down a little bit because of the weather. But we made, over the weekend, we made about six thousand dollars for our Alpine Scholarship Fund. So that is great. And now we just wait for all the scholarship applications.
Yeah.
And see how many we get to award this year.
Yeah, I think it was very successful. The Fire Dancers, I got a ton of great comments on that. It shows very well.
Yeah. That was fun.
Yeah.
Hopefully again next year. We have Easter coming up next. Oh, wait, wait, wait. We had the Coney Classic.
We did it.
That, that went very well, I understand.
Yeah, Coney Classic went well. Weather was not as cooperative, but at least we didn't have gale force winds. But we had twenty-two participants in Ski Jour and good time had by most. I don't have the numbers just yet. But I'm guessing we raised a little more money this year than last year because we had a lot of involved businesses and organizations that donated on the front end as opposed to the back end. So if you don't know, we split it fifty-fifty with Lucky's. And yeah, it's always a good time.
Yep. Good job on both those events.
So we have Easter coming up. We're going to start working on that. And then we're also going to meet, start having meetings to plan Mountain Days. This Friday at Bingo, we are working with the Child Development Center as a fundraiser. And they've got a ton of stuff planned. They've got a dinner, a pulled pork dinner. They've got a ton of really cool, or silent auction and raffle items. And of course, everything they earn helps them over at their facility, helping with what the classes are teaching. So come to Bingo. If you haven't come at all, come this Friday. It's a great opportunity. It starts at seven thirty. The doors open at six thirty. And people get there at six fifteen to start saving their spots. So don't wait until seven twenty-five.
Yeah. There won't be any cards left or something, right, at seven twenty-five?
Yeah, there won't be any seats left.
Oh, seats left.
You might not get to sit together.
Okay. That's the most important thing.
Yep.
Thanks. Jeremy, do you want to go on to?
Yeah. Economic Development, status quo with the county, but I will go over what we had here in town. And that's the opening of the new ER and OR back on January tenth. So we had a VIP night on the Friday and there was roughly ninety folks participated there. And then on Saturday, we had an open to the public. And we had about, just shy, I think, of two hundred folks run through. I know we had the auxiliary ladies from the hospital and they were nonstop, just giving tours over and over and over again. So it was pretty well received considering the weather and it being winter time. And then I have, let's see here. For the month of January, for better or worse, it's, it's an option for us here and it's good, so I'll say it's for the better. We had seventy-two visits at the emergency department for the month of January, twenty-two OR cases, nine of those cath labs, nine GI and four ortho. The CT and X-ray, a hundred and eighty-six images since opening. So what that means is that's all those folks that would have traveled either to Afton or to Jackson or to IF, considered here in Alpine or at least Star Valley. So that's, it's huge. And if you didn't know, again, this is the only cath lab in western Wyoming. Dr. Gonzalez does a great job there. But that's it right now for economic development, for travel and tourism. Again, it's open enrollment for applications through March fifteenth. I know there'll be several applications coming through. We're also going to be working on joint projects with the county because I know there's a couple of applications that the event that they're applying for is not technically in the incorporated boundaries of Alpine. It's just outside. But Alpine would be the beneficiary as far as our hotels, motels, RV and whatnot. So we're going to be discussing that as well at our first meeting in either end of March or first of April. Other than that, that's, yeah. I think that's it so far.
We had, did someone reach out to you regarding updating the bylaws? Okay.
Oh, bylaws, yeah, 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 yeah. We'll be, we'll be updating the bylaws as well.
Okay. And is that just a resolution for us?
It'll be, yeah, exactly.
So you guys will have a chance to discuss the changes?
Yep.
And then, then.
We'll submit it to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay. And then the sheriff's report was submitted in writing?
I have a question on that. As I was just seeing arrests and all the different things. Does Shane come in quarterly ever to chat live? Or how often?
He comes in as often as we want.
Okay, so if we request him to come?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there anything in particular you wanted to talk to him about? Because we can, we can ask.
Okay, we can just ask him to come. Okay, no, I will.
It's nice to have him at a meeting too, but yeah.
Yeah, just if people had questions.
Sure. Yeah, grill the sheriff.
Do we have a compliance officer report as well?
I don't have one.
Okay.
Do you think that's something she could start providing?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you put that on the list? We'll just add that to the reports.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to action items. First thing on the list is the change order for the pretreatment plant. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept Jorgensen Engineering recommendation to approve change orders for Cambrian Innovations totaling increased contract cost of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents and Precision Electrical totaling an increased cost, increased contract cost of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents and authorize Mayor Green to sign.
Second.
I think Andrea got to it. I heard it. I, it was very close. Thank you. We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So I'll pull this up. Of course, we've got Kevin here. You already gave us a little bit of the background on these change orders. Does anyone, I guess I'll just start out. Does anyone have any questions for Kevin based on the conversation he already gave during the report? I think he laid it out a little bit. There's a lot of data that we have, but Kevin, why don't you just run us through real quick Cambrian's change order? The, how we came up with the net fifty-five thousand?
Okay, sure. Let's see. There we go. All right, so if you look at it, Cambrian's got thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars and eleven cents, unaccounted for parts and sensors. That was the parts that were the, to be provided by others list that we talked, that I talked about that came out in April of twenty-three. And that was not shown, pushed forward to the contractor that back in July of twenty-four, that Precision actually gave a price for. So that's a cost that you would have had to pay for originally. So that's something that's part of the project that is needed to make it go forward. There's another item in there that's forty-three thousand, seventy-six dollars for process installation support. What that is, is going through and helping with the drawings themselves, helping with electrical, helping with the mechanical, trying to pull all that together. As they have questions, Cambrian's have been actually coming to the site. Steve's been coming about every two weeks and answering questions and going through inventories and finding parts, trying to make sure that they know what it is and putting labels on numbers. We're looking at trying to get Adam with Cambrian out here. He's more the controls guy and he actually starts up plants. We're hoping to get him out here in the next couple of weeks. He's a little bit probably more expensive because he's got to fly in from Oregon and stay for a night or so. So we're hoping to get him out for here for two days to do that. Steve, who comes in from Pocatello, so that's not too bad. That's about a four hour, five hour kind of turnaround to come over. If you look at that, I've got a minus twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's the cost that I mentioned, that Precision, there's some process piping on the Cambrian MBR equipment container that needed to be finalized or wasn't shown. So basically Precision's charging the town for that and then we are deducting that from Cambrian's change order.
Okay.
That's why Cambrian's added price would be fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Okay, then you want to run through Precision's real quick?
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, hold, hold on just one second. Mr. Sanderson wants to ask a question.
So.
Yes, sir.
How much is this fifty-five, one twenty-seven represent as far as percentage increase in the contract?
What's the percentage increase on the contract that that represents?
Right now, the equipment is like about one point nine million dollars. And then there's a hundred thousand dollars in process design support. So just have to add those two together, I would say. So you're almost two million dollars. So it's a fifty-five thousand of a two million dollar contract.
So this thirty-nine, four oh two, it may, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm getting at is that was a mistake that was made in the bid.
That was not a mistake that was made in the bid. That was some information that was never given to the contractor to put those sensors on, the sensors and parts.
So when you say the contractor, are you talking about JL or Cambrian?
That would actually be Precision.
Oh, Precision.
So Precision Electrical is actually our general contractor doing the final process piping. The interior work to, it's going to make the system work.
And that information would have been sent by the previous town engineer?
Yes, when it was sent out in April, the end of April.
Right. To Rendezvous Engineering.
Right. At that point, we should have had that in our, you know, work that we would basically would have put that out to the contractor. In this case, it was Precision Electrical that's doing the work. So they never saw that list.
When was this error discovered?
When was the error discovered, Kevin? Just recently, right?
Probably three, four weeks ago when we actually discovered. We started seeing all these missing parts and we couldn't figure out why Cambrian didn't have those parts. And then Rob Stroes, who works with Cambrian, he's worked there about three months longer than I have on this project. He came in in November of twenty-two. So he came across that email and then he brought it up to us that this was, you know, Cambrian actually said this is going to, should be provided by others and others should have been Precision Electric. But Precision Electric never saw that list.
Would you mind putting that, just a short memo and emailing it to Councilman Scafidi? She's going to work on this.
And also, I think it goes nicely with that report that you gave that I think Councilmember Scafidi received recently, the one that kind of.
Oh, the whole timeline.
Timeline, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So no, I'll put that in there.
Yeah.
I just feel like we have a lot of obstructed progress from three years ago that just seems to be snowballing into a bigger and bigger deficit to the town. Because one point two, I guess it's now one point two-five million is now the responsibility of the town. And I hate to see rate increases because of errors of others and not you, Kevin, or Jorgensen. And I do think, and this isn't on you, but I feel like this is the beginning of forensic auditing at the town. I just feel like we got to, we've got to start digging into these numbers that just keep popping up and where, why was this missed? And who missed it and all of that? So for me, this is a really big one because I used to smell the sewer plant for years. And so I was very invested in this dynamic. So now it's just one of the things, this is kind of my pet project to watch it, so.
What did you call it, obstructed what?
I feel like we've had obstructed progress.
Obstruct, I think that's what we're going to call it. When we, when we name it.
What does that mean? But I just feel like we have just always had speed bumps put in front of this progress.
I was just wondering, when, when we open it up, we're going to put a sign. We're going to call it obstructed progress.
But I just think, it, it makes me very sad that this entire grant was to do a benefit to the town and now it's a detriment to the town and not, again, on Jorgensen at all, but just what has transpired over the last, I think we're on the fifth year.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah.
It definitely goes back to previous administrations and setting us up for this and all in good hopes, you know? And at this point, we, I guess the analogy is we're so pregnant with this baby.
Oh, I'm not.
And, and we have to keep shoving money at it, like, because we've got it, we're nesting right now. We're getting the room ready and getting all of our blankets and the cribs and everything. But we need to get all that stuff so we can have this baby and turn it on.
Yep. Oh, and I'm not, this is just discussion so that I'm educated as to the process.
No, we want you to be educated for sure.
Well, and an offshoot on that, we all talk about the parts and the electrical and the involvement with Cambrian. But I think what we also need to keep our finger on is how much more it's costing us in engineering fees as we have to go back, discover mistakes. We didn't even know what we were missing. And I know that that's, this is one of many that we've had come up that thankfully you've discovered. But I will want to make sure that we keep in mind that that is increasing our engineering budget as well.
Yeah, and that's part of the goal, getting it done as soon as possible, right?
Yeah, we'll move you.
Yeah, move you on.
And one thing that Cambrian's management brought up is they've got to process what they do is they actually normally, this, this one that for Alpine is a little bit out of their ordinary of what they're doing. They like to have the building already built in a sense like what you all already did. But then they would bring in the equipment and they would pay for the installation. And then they would run the plant for a management fee and for so much flow rate through. So Cambrian is actually looking at this plant to see what those numbers would be.
Okay.
So it's an option that, the way I understand it, and Steve is actually listening on the YouTube, so hopefully I'm saying it right, that they would basically pay for the equipment and then basically the town would pay it back over the twenty-year period. And that way, that, those costs could be actually taken, given to Melvin since Melvin is the only user of this plant at this point, so. It's, but it's a little way to kind of maybe get the. But it's a little way to kind of maybe get the town out of having to pay for this itself.
Amortize it over twenty years instead of having the upfront cost, basically.
Exactly.
Okay, do you want to run through real quick the Precision Electrical's change order?
Yeah, so the first one is thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. The screenroom gas monitoring system. So KVA did the original mechanical system design on it. When it was still actually coming out with a rendezvous engineering and they put a gas monitoring system on it. Then we found out that the equipment that was in the room was class one div two. Which is basically explosion resistant piping. And we don't have that in the building, so that's why we had to put a little garage in a sense over the screen. So that's why we kind of stopped last November, had to get the designs done and then came out again in the spring with it. So when that screenroom gas monitoring system, the monitoring system was made for the entire room, the building. And now the new one that we have to get, according to what JVA Consulting told us, is this different one that it monitors different gases. So that's the thirty-nine thousand dollar number. The eighteen thousand dollar HVAC controls and ventilation system is based on that something similar of that. That we went from a ventilation system that was ventilating the entire building to now we're doing a ventilation system that's doing the building less the screenroom, which is class one div two. Then the cost to finish the piping, we talked about that, that twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one is adding to the town's, their contract, but deducting from Cambrian's. And then the twenty-three sixty-eight is for two blower motor starters that were not shown on the drawings. Again, we get stuck in this, Cambrian had a set of drawings for their equipment, their container. Then JVA did electrical for the building. Then rendezvous was kind of in the middle of a little bit of that. And then we had to get JVA to come and clean it up a little bit for the controls. And then when we had to get a screenroom, it changed again. So there's been lots of different engineers in on it as it's been moving through. So we're, that's one of the things we found that were, it was never even shown on the drawings. So that's the added price of eighty-six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars to Precision Electrical contract.
Any questions for Kevin regarding that?
No.
Pregnant, pregnant, pregnant.
Just deliver the baby.
Yeah. If we. What else is out there?
The only thing that I know out there is the cost that Precision has to help finish up the MVR equipment. Electrical panel for Cambrian. And that cost they are keeping track of, so that way they'll give us the same change order, we'll have another change order to Precision Electric. And then we'll have to have a deducted change order to Cambrian for that work.
Okay, so it's kind of a wash.
I, I don't know of anything else out there, but, you know, we didn't know about that thirty-nine thousand dollar number four weeks ago either.
Right.
So.
But we pretty much hopefully have accounted for all the missing parts and.
Design changes.
Pumps and all that stuff that. The sixty things that we were missing now, we've identified and, and now we've got it down to, basically, there's a handful of things that we still are going to be waiting on. And then you'll be able to get these things going as soon as we approve this and we'll be down the road.
That's correct. Cambrian's has, theirs pieces, parts are four weeks out. Precision's, the gas monitoring system, they said was six to eight weeks out, so that's the longest lead item. The actual piping and the plumbing systems, they are at ninety-nine point five percent done at this point right now. So we're just down to the last electrical pieces.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin while we've got him?
I feel like we should plan some kind of a celebration for when we get to train them.
Oh, man. We are, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know what we're going to do. Yeah.
Yeah, who'd lose drink in the water?
Yeah. We'll tell. I don't know what we, you, especially Ben, yes, of course, we need to plan something, but.
Yeah, five dollar budget.
Well, it'll be BYOB.
Yeah.
Thank you for hopping on, Kevin, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Kevin, as always, thanks for keeping track of these things because I, I don't know who would be doing it if you weren't doing it, so we really appreciate it. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. We have the motion on the table. Thanks, Sarah. If there's no further discussion. All those in favor of said motions for the change order, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. We'll move on to the next one. Which is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one prohibiting the extension of water and sewer services to properties located outside incorporated boundaries on the first reading.
Second.
Incorporated boundaries of the town of Alpine on the first reading.
We have a motion and you still second, okay. Discussion, so I'll give you a little background on this. This is kind of a, something that we've talked about for, I don't know, two years now, but we're finally making it happen. But the intention of this is, you know, we have these scarce resources in the town of Alpine. And why are we necessarily selling our resources to people outside the town? I never really understood that. So the purpose of this is basically to say, if you want our services, we'll encourage you to come into the town of Alpine. If, if this gets passed, we will no longer be selling water, for example, or sewer hookups to people outside the town of Alpine. So in my opinion, this is, this is pretty powerful and, and needed. So that's where the genesis for this came from. And Mr. Sanderson wrote it, so if you have any.
Complaints.
Complaints grammatical or whatnot, point them to him, so.
And it does provide an exception.
Yes.
For, but, you know, a special situation.
Correct.
So.
I don't know what that would.
I don't know what it is either, but it's good that that's included.
Right. And, and there are some people that are outside the town of Alpine that currently have services, so this would not affect them in any way. But, yeah, so.
They just pay a higher rate?
They pay, they currently pay a higher rate, but honestly, I just don't think that offsets the scarcity of the, of the resources once we're selling it to them, so. Anyways, open for discussion.
Yeah, straightforward. I mean, we don't have anybody that's. Waiting or, I mean, the only thing I can think of is if there comes a development that it is cheaper, less cost effective for us to annex. And more cost effective for us to charge, meaning like, again. I don't know, I don't know what that would be, I can't see the future.
I guess, I guess the, I think we took care of the cost of the town of Alpine for them to annex in by, with the new annexation ordinance. So we probably shouldn't have, you know, a bunch of out of pocket expenses. All the costs to hook up to the system are owned by the people that are coming in and hooking on, so. I think that kind of covers it.
Well, and they get all the benefits of being in the town and we get all the benefits of having them tax revenue.
Yep.
That's a win-win.
Did I explain it well enough? Okay.
Well, it's your baby.
Yeah. Well.
Long overdue, we appreciate it.
Drew it's portrait.
Yes. Any, any questions on it?
No.
No questions, no more discussion?
No.
First reading.
All right.
Something comes up.
We'll catch it on the next one, I guess, but, all right, with no further discussion, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one prohibiting the extension of water and sewer services to property located outside incorporated boundaries on first reading? Say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None. Ordinance passed on first reading. And then text my gov proposal. Sarah, do you have the? The reason, do you know the information on why we're going back to text my gov or changing to text my gov?
I saw something about.
Doesn't it say that they changed their bid to include?
Our credits?
Our credits from the other provider?
Right.
So they kind of are matching it, it sounds like?
Yeah.
So that we will go with them?
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think there's certain things that text my gov allows us to do, like, for example, you could, when the invitation goes out via text, that there's a meeting coming up. You could actually text back agenda and it'll send you the agenda, some of those things that are kind of handy.
It's a little, little more interactive.
Right, so I think, I think it would definitely be nice.
I thought it also diverts, I'm sorry, didn't interrupt you. It also is supposed to divert text messages to the appropriate department. Correct, so let's say you wanted to reach out to the public works director, you had a leak or you have a water question.
Oh, okay.
Then Craig would receive it right away, that was the difference between text my gov and the previous provider.
That sounds nice.
Yes, and it also helps us on our end data log all of the open projects complaints.
Yep, it sounds great to me, it's, and it's basically the same price if I'm not mistaken, or very similar, correct?
Yeah, the only issue was that the credit's on the previous one.
Okay.
Do we know how many text messages we've sent out thus far?
Not, not that many.
Not, okay, I'm just seeing the twenty-five thousand text messages per year.
It's per, like, user or whatever too, right?
Yeah, we can set.
So let's just say we have a thousand people that have opted in, we could send twenty-five texts out, is that, that's how it works, right? It's per user? Is that how you figure out how many tech?
Uh, that's what I'm wondering, because on this, it just shows.
I'm not.
The package includes twenty-five thousand text messages per year and then below that a fifty thousand text messages one time allotment. So what, where, one, where are we at with, I mean, to me, twenty-five thousand doesn't seem like a lot. You know, if we've got.
Well, how many people have opted in?
Two thousand people, we got two meetings a month, that's just us, that's not.
We don't have two thousand people opted in.
No.
No.
And then it'll, it would take us time to go through fifty thousand.
We have anywhere from four to six meetings a month, depending on council, P and Z.
Could be design review.
Design review, we're, we're having our. Comp plan coming up, traveling tourism, so that's why I wonder like, where are we at? Is twenty-five thousand enough?
Well, okay, but it says included fifty thousand.
Right, one time.
So I guess at the end of the year, you probably see how many you actually sent out and then renegotiate it.
We might adjust it.
What's the cost for so?
It's two thousand dollar package for the year. Jim, did you have something? Yes.
So these text messages, when they come in and go out, is it public able to text in, like, say I want to text the mayor?
Um, I think it more refers to, like, we'll send out an invitation to watch our YouTube channel or something like that.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't coming into your personal phones or communications from.
I, I do, I do see them.
I wouldn't do that.
No, no, no.
No, everything's through the, their interface, yeah, that's a great question.
There is, you know, we can see who's sends things back and we can respond or whatever, but. To me, this, this seems like a, a great option and I don't think we probably need to spend too much time on it. But does anyone have any other questions regarding this?
We have four of this one over.
Yeah.
Four, it's only eighteen.
Yeah, fifty thousand will be a good test for us to figure out how many we're going to have.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the table? I think, I don't think we do.
No.
I didn't recall a motion.
Let, let's put a motion on.
Hold on one second there, Dan, let's get a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve text my gov proposal and allow Mayor Green to sign.
There we go.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, we've had some discussion, but Dan Scow is going to enlighten us with some more.
Just a question, just to clarify, so we all understand. This is for you to communicate with us.
Correct.
Right? And with as many meetings and programs you have going on through the year, you find that all of us will respond better to a text message rather than an email.
It's up to you, you can opt in for text, email.
Both.
Uh, both, yeah, so it's, it's up to you to decide.
But it's a way for you, the town, to communicate with its constituents in a clear, faster way.
That's right.
Because, because not, I mean, we try a lot with social media, but not everybody.
No, that, and I was thinking that same thing, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to, we hope that we get more people opting in, all, all the time, you know, we'll have some event and try to get as many people to opt in as possible, then everyone says stop as soon as they get the first text message. But, you know, I don't know how many we actually have, Melody, we'll, we'll get those numbers next time. But, yeah, I, I think it's a good thing, the more communication, the better.
This helps with emergency alerts.
Of course, we want as many people as we can.
Yes, we do have countywide, but many towns opt in if it's inexpensive enough and reasonable to do an emergency alert system. So that would help us with things like massive power outages, we're providing shelter at the civic center.
Right.
Or even when your water goes out.
Right, this part of town is, is going to see a reduction in water pressure or something like that, so. Yeah, I think it's a good thing.
I think we'll spend.
Yeah.
I'm going to quote you on that.
Any other discussion during the budget, Dan says we can spend on him. Any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of motion to approve text my gov proposal and allow Mayor Green to sign, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Sorry. Opposed? None? All right. Motion pass. The only other thing we had on here that we were wanting to discuss was the ordinance for the land use development code, which would require pulling it off the table. There was some confusion as when the information was sent out and did everyone have a chance to read through it? We did have our meeting at the beginning of the month, so I think we had a lot of time to kind of digest it. But to pull it off the table, we'd need three fourths of the town council members to pull it off the table, so. If somebody would like to make a motion and then we can discuss it and see if it's ready to be pulled off the table.
Okay, I'm happy to. I move to make a motion to remove ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine, land use and development code, second reading from the table.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So I just want to clarify. We had the meeting at the beginning of the month, the changes were turned around pretty quickly. And then I just want to make sure everyone's had a chance to read through those changes and understand the red lines that were made and, and make sure that you're willing to discuss it before we pull it off the table, so.
And I have not, I just saw it this afternoon, so I haven't seen the actual changes that were made. Yes, we had a great discussion, I look forward to it, but I haven't read what's there.
Okay. Did everyone else have a chance to read through them?
Not all of them.
Okay. You, you probably had the most to try to digest anyways, how do you feel?
Um, it probably wouldn't hurt to take a little more time, just to make sure.
Okay.
But I also want to be respectful of planning and zoning, I mean, have they been waiting?
Oh, they, we've been waiting a long time.
Because I don't want them to be like, hello, we delivered this to you and we would like it passed.
Yeah, it's, it's, that ship sailed a long time ago, Councilmember Scafidi.
I like that Dan's laughing at.
But, yeah, we've been trying to, to land this for quite a long time, but with some recent changes that were made with the building official and things like that, it kind of made it. with the building official and things like that, it kind of made it even more problematic. And to be honest, I don't think we've actually captured all those things. I think to, to really do it well, we need to update like all the flow charts and everything. So to be honest, uh, maybe it is best just to be left on the table and, and then we'll, uh, look at it next month.
Can you call a special meeting if you needed to do back to back?
Well, we have a special meeting scheduled for April, uh, March. Not April, I think it's March, don't we have this, no, no, it's.
March fourth?
It's May, we have a special meeting in May.
But we, if you mean we could in March if we needed to, but that's probably fine to wait till the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Uh, Dan Scow, planning and zoning.
I totally appreciate what you guys are saying. I want you guys to be aware, the building season is gonna start in April.
Yes.
A lot of those changes are gonna impact what happens in the next building year.
Yes.
So if, you know, I don't have an issue with you guys wanting to read and clarify, however, time is of the essence.
Well, we could do.
If you say to us, you're gonna have a reading, when do you consider your third reading? By, if we're looking at dates right now?
Well, I think we could have, um, a special meeting in, uh, the beginning of March, and then we would have.
To pass the second reading?
Yeah, and then we have our town council meeting, but I want to make sure that we have enough time to go over these changes. Because since our meeting two weeks ago, I mean, I don't think we've had enough time to make the changes to like the flow chart and all that stuff. So I don't know if we can get enough done to make substantive changes enough, you know? So that's what I'm a little worried about.
I'm just prepping it.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, we want to get it done, we want to get it done.
Once April comes, guys, they're gonna be coming.
Yes.
Yeah.
And a lot of that updating is gonna be impacted, or not impacted
Right.
with the next building season, so.
Well, if we do a second reading tonight and we approve it, then we still have time on third reading.
Right.
March eighteenth.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you for this suggestion.
My homework, Dan.
Well, I think if we prioritize L U D C.
Yeah.
And streamline our agendas, then all, we could focus all of our time.
Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but, um, you know, I feel like for second reading, we, we have it pretty well dialed in.
Okay.
On third reading, um, we can make these last few changes and really have a good conversation, but I want to make sure that we can get it, we have a month basically to get it to that March, what'd you say?
Eighteenth.
Meeting.
I think that's what it is.
And I think we can do that. Sarah, do you feel comfortable with that as well? Okay.
Okay, so.
And again, if we had to push it until the end of March and do another special meeting, depending on advertising requirements, we could, but at least we would have everything locked in by the beginning of building season.
March first or whatever that first.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have anything on the agenda, I don't think, do we?
We have something.
Oh, it's, right.
I mean, we could, we could put this for March fourth.
Yeah.
Can we pass?
I mean, for me, I just haven't, we had a great meeting, everything looked good, I just, I didn't get this until this afternoon, and so I haven't looked at it to see. So why don't we do it on the fourth?
So you're suggesting we do a special meeting on the fourth to pass the second reading?
To pass the second.
And then we move into the eighteenth to pass the third reading?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to get it done before building season, so it's really amenable to that.
I'm, I'm fine with that too, so, um, what I'm hearing is, let's, let's just take a quick vote whether or not you want to take it off the table, and keeping in mind, we need three out of four to say they do want to take it off the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor of taking ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero-nine, um, land use development code, second reading off the table at this point, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so, um, it's gonna stay on the table and we will focus on that for our, um, March fourth.
In which case, we'll need to specially advertise.
Yeah, Sarah, we need to advertise for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder, Dan.
Yep, we appreciate it.
Um, we, moving on to discussion items and then we'll get to public comment. We wanted to talk real quick about the building and development permit fees. As Kevin mentioned, they had a meeting, which I was not able to attend with some people from Jorgensen, and, uh, they've actually met with the new building official, and it's uh, do you have this, do you mind reading that? Okay, thank you. Here. Before, before we had a big discussion, and Monica's out tonight and she's sick, I want her to be here when we kind of have that real discussion since she was in that meeting, but in lieu of her being here, she sent a memo that Sarah's gonna read.
This evening's town council meeting includes a discussion item regarding updates to the town of Alpine, Alpine's bu- building and development fees. Recommendation from DJ Ramel, our new building official, has been provided and is included in the meeting packet for your review. Currently, the state of Wyoming Fire Marshal utilizes the ICC data to assess fees. Monica has been working closely with Mr. Ramel to determine the appropriate fee multiplier to ensure the town of Alpine's costs are adequately covered. Monica and Mr. Ramel will present their formal recommendation at next month's town council meeting on March eighteenth. Due to the complexities involved in this ordinance change, Jim Sanderson will draft the new ordinance. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Monica.
Thank you. There's just, and I think we kind of, someone discussed it tonight, maybe, um, but going away from ERUs to a different way, it sounds like it's a much more straightforward way of going about it. So we want to make sure we have all the information on that before we, um, jump in with both feet, so we kind of planned on talking about it tonight, but I think it's better just to, um, wait until we have a little more time to get our feet underneath us and anyways, we'll, we'll have lots of studying for you to do before the meeting next, next month, but that's all I had, and I'll open it up to public comment.
Oh.
On that last piece, um, those are two pieces, building fees and development fees. Those are two different items. One is all the infrastructure, water and sewer. The other one is building fees, which is based on, on Ramel's, whatever his financial.
There's like a percentage, I don't know how it works, but I, I know about this much.
Have you guys bought about, I mean, building permit fees went to seven fifty, are you thinking that they would be like around twelve fifty?
I don't know the exact number, but in general, I think our fees are probably in the range of maybe doubling or somewhere in that range.
I thought so.
Yeah, and then it covers all of those costs.
So that would mean building, a building permit fee would be fifteen hundred. Is it seven fifty now, we're going fifteen hundred?
We're not going to it yet, but we're, yeah.
But I'm just using it as a.
May- maybe something in that range, right.
I think you guys are still on the very bottom and comparative.
Yeah.
Communities, Wyoming, Idaho, I don't think that should even be an issue. I would totally agree with that.
I think we're finally to the point where we're gonna have a real good understanding of what all the costs are going in.
Good.
So with our new building official, it's gonna help quite a bit, and since that's an outsourced position, we can really dial in on how much money and time is spent for that process, so it should be very good. Sue, did you have something you wanted to?
Hello, council, council, mayor, Sarah, audience, people at home. Sue Callis, resident Alpine, um, I made a statement in December when I left planning and zoning that I was just getting started and I wanted to focus on this gravel pit situation because I think it's dire, um, and we need to deal with it. So basically, there's a gravel pit committee, the G, the GPC, and, and acronyms have been flying, so I thought I'd throw that out there. Shay and I have spent hours, and, and Mayor Green has, has been part of the conversation, reviewing data, meeting with people in the county, um, compiling that data into a spreadsheet, getting more data from DEQ, Idaho, Wyoming, I mean, I have this much at this point that Shay and I have gone through and, and tried to make sense of it all, there's a lot there. I want to refresh and reiterate some data, and this will be on record for anyone who tunes into YouTube down the road. This whole project, all these, the gravel pits themselves began in nineteen seventy-two, it began as ten acres. It went to seventeen acres, it went to twenty acres, and it went to one hundred and eight point nine acres in twenty-eleven. It's an industrial site that has grown exponentially. In twenty-twenty-four, Sunrock wants to add an additional five years and two hundred and forty acres of BOR land for mining, extraction and crushing. I have an issue with, we have an issue in, in doing the research that the permits may not all be in place. We're looking into it, they may be. But there's a couple holes that we're seeing now. There's potential storm drain runoff into WOTUS, you know what POTUS is, you know what FLOTUS is, WOTUS is water of the United States. So we are now dealing with that potential because the expansion is in that area of WOTUS. And I want to read, uh, something that we stumbled upon in an article that was, um, published in, with the S V I in two thousand one, June of two thousand one. "The operation that began in June of nineteen seventy-two and was estimated to continue until twenty-twenty. The land after mining will be returned to a pond providing recreational and wildlife uses." Supposed to end in twenty-twenty. According to what we've discovered, I don't, I'm not saying it's all fact yet, we're, I'm, we're in the process of fact checking. But they're now wanting to push this into five more years, and I can say one thing that has been confirmed, that there have been multiple Clean Water Act violations by said entity wanting to expand five more years in a different state. We're looking into all this. We're digging, we're digging, I still have a stack coming from DEQ, there's more information we're gathering. Shay and I, and, and Mayor, you've been great, but Shay and I are like really like digging into all this to the point of being blurred-eyed and delirious. There's so much there. It is not healthy for this town. I don't care what anybody says, it's just not. The town is growing and it's going to move south, and an industrial situation is smack in the middle of our town. I believe in the health, safety and welfare of all residents, businesses and tourists that come through this area. We are gonna continue to dig, I believe there needs to be some serious conversation. I'm concerned and, and we are growing more concerned with every batch of data we attack. So you'll, you'll be hearing more from me. This is just a quick overview of what's been happening, what's going on and where we're headed. But we're definitely headed somewhere. We have a, uh, the town of Alpine has written a letter to the BOR to become a cooperating agent, agency. We haven't heard back yet is my understanding, but it was emailed and mailed out, the hard copy. We, we need to see it at that table. So we're waiting here on that, and hopefully that's not an issue for them. And then I'm, I, this needs to be confirmed, but March first, we were told in a conversation that Shay and I had with Amanda from the BOR that an open forum slash public comment opportunity would arise for all of us here in Alpine, and that would be at the Alpine Civic Center, and obviously we will keep you posted. But that needs to happen and every single human being that lives in this town needs to be there. So, um, we'll keep you posted on that, maybe it'll be a cool little text, but, um, that is gonna be a big, big public forum that everyone needs to speak out at. This is really important. This is, again, I want to go back to the health, safety and welfare of every single human being in this town. And county.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I think the, the one thing that you're really gonna, in, in your research, you're gonna find you're trying to determine if all of the permits were in place. And, and, um, that's gonna be really important, um, so.
A lot of them are, actually, but there's one that's scathingly not.
Right, so you're doing a great job, thank you for all the work you're doing.
Well, it's you and Shay and I, but Shay and I have definitely been hitting it.
I'm, I'm just trying to help wherever I can.
Yeah, and it's appreciated, yeah.
So, um, but just, yeah, keep, keep the requests coming and we'll, we'll keep firing away and see where it goes, but appreciate all of your due diligence and work on that.
It is our pleasure. Shay, do you want, did I miss anything?
Um, I guess I'll clarify, just nothing you said incorrect, but I want the public to know, a cooperating agency means we're not cooperating per se that we're advocating on behalf of Sunrock. We just become a cooperating agency where we get a seat at the table.
A seat at the table.
So every time something in the process happens, we are notified. So that's the biggest concern is, we don't want to miss a window that we should have been notified about. And as we did four hours, almost five hours, uh, going through every DEQ permit, printing them out, highlighting them, we have realized, um, just the depth of, there's, I think, twelve agencies, federal, state and local. So it is layer upon layer that has to be dissected, so.
And we're dissecting.
We're dissecting.
More, more to come, stay tuned.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
Pleasure.
And I really would like people to see a map of this two hundred acres. It is where we camp, it is where we recreate. It is a location for twenty years, my kids have used, we've all used, so.
I think it's also important to note that despite, um, because I've looked at so many gravel pit websites, there are, they say there are options when the mining is completed, that the land goes back to its natural state. I just would like everybody to consider that, in my opinion, that's an impossibility, and you lose a lot with that timeline. So I know there's a lot of inter-agency complexity, but we've had a huge win in that if this March first forum happens, it's my understanding that that also opens us up for thirty additional days for public comment. Is that correct? Okay.
That's what we understand at this point.
That's huge, so you're definitely making a huge difference. I appreciate it.
Baby steps, baby steps.
Any other public comment?
A quick comment, so that.
Mom.
Well, now, you have to come up to the microphone.
Come up to the mic.
And you have to, now, you have to tell us your name and your affiliation with this group.
Mom, you just hit the red button.
I'm in an oil.
So, um, I have two things actually, really quickly. I think it's wonderful that you have the, you just talked about the text service that will go out to your citizens, and that would, what you were just talking about would be a dandy way to let them know of a really important thing coming up that they, that they could pay attention to. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, before Emily was born, we lived in the Silicon Valley, and when the Silicon Valley started really gaining momentum in the seventies, a lot of things were done to the, the ground, the groundwater, the soil that nobody ever thought about. And there was a, a lot of things they wished they could go back thirty years and erase, or fix, or not have done. So I think that it's great that you're looking at this now, so.
Thank you for your comment. Good job. No further public comment? Heather, you came just to come and look at our smiling faces, all right, great. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, adjourned.